... recorded, and if there's any member in the audience recording this meeting, please disclose that now. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. All who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. This meeting is valid in accordance with章法 meeting law, and a little by order. Please take your role.
Sure. Dr. Kraftries?
Here.
Ms. De Tomaso?
Here.
Mr. Farley?
Here.
Mr. Gazillo is not going to be here tonight. Mr. Hagmeyer?
Here.
Mr. Hopper?
Here.
Ms. Keith is not going to be here. Mr. Lacatelle?
Here.
Mrs. Ladizori is not able to be here. Mr. Les is not able to be here. Mr. Peters is not here yet, but I believe he'll be here.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Mrs. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Wagner is not able to be here. Mr. Amacost?
Here.
We have an open seat in Washington. Mr. Bartels?
Here.
Our CBA rep is not here. I did receive information that it is officially Laura Miller, who is our union president at this time. Ms. Jackson has completed her time as the president. And our student rep, Hannah?
Here.
Great. Okay, Hagmeyer's here.
You got me already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Trying to help me. I know I'm a little rusty, but I'm like, I thought I got him.
I'm sorry.
I was trying to do the numbers in my head. Do we have a quorum, is my question?
We do.
We have a quorum. Great. I thought you were going to help me with that. We got a quorum. We're good.
Okay, thank you. Are there any responses from the audience? Okay, seeing none, Hannah? It's all yours.
So, on May 22nd, our Unified Track Team went to Western Mass Championships, and they won, so they were Division One Champions. And then on May 30th, they competed at the state championship and won runners-up, which is really great. It was their first year competing. We were all very happy for them. Also on May 30th was the History Fair at Hancock-Schaefer Village, where sophomores and juniors presented different projects and research that they've been working on. I attended, and it was a great experience to be there. On May 11th, first graders from Craneville came to take part in science workshops at Wacona. They were taught about air, sound, the solar system, and plants. And I actually helped to teach the lesson on sound, and that was a lot of fun to see all of the children there just enjoying it. The following day was eighth grade step-up day, and there were student panels and student council tours. And then yesterday was the Renaissance Evening of Excellence, where students in grades nine through 11 were recognized for academic achievement, and junior scholarship and book awards were handed out. And then today, our sophomore team competed at Western Mass semifinals, and I just found out that they won 14 to 1, so it's great. And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Hannah. And next on the agenda is Secretary's Report, minutes of the regular meeting of May 24th. Would a member please make the motion?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 24th as printed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Motion carries. And would a member please dispense with the warrants?
Move to approve warrant number 2018-45 dated June 15th, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $399,994.77.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve warrant number 2018-45. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? One abstention, motion carries. Two abstentions, motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR-2018-48 dated May 31st, 2018. Payroll in the amount of $629,378.97.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR-2018-48. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions?
Stayed.
Two abstentions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR-2018-48D dated May 31st, 2018. Accounts payable in the amount of $238,968.05.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR-2018-48 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Stayed.
Two abstentions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR-2018-50 dated June 14th, 2018. Payroll in the amount of $630,084.48.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve PR-2018-50. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Stayed.
Two abstentions, the motion carries.
Move to approve warrant number PR-2018-50D dated June 14th, 2018. Counts payable in the amount of $108,944.37.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve warrant number PR-2018-50 Delta. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Stayed.
Two abstentions, motion carries. Okay, next order of business is Communications. Town of Vacancy, or Town of Washington, we continue to have a vacancy there. Superintendent's evaluation, I have almost all of them in. Personnel will be meeting next week to go over all the results for a spreadsheet, tabulation of all the comments, and then recommend a final evaluation. And then we have the next topic, which is the MAS-C, MAS-S, MAS-C Joint Conference Registration. That conference will be held on Hyannis, November 7th through 10th of this year. And basically, what we're looking for now is to have two names that go to MAS-C as the voting delegates and the alternate delegate. So is anyone interested in going? Bonnie? Anyone else? Bonnie and Barbara. So, with the committee's permission, I'll write in, who wants to be the primary?
I have to check my calendar. It kind of is a guess.
So I think we do this early because we get a reduced cost for these positions. If anyone wants to go, let us know as soon as you can, and that way we get that reduced cost. It's somewhere between $50 and $100, I think, per person. But then, you know, you get your mileage paid for, hotel, and meals, but nothing extra.
Okay.
That comes out of your pocket. So it's all in the favor, all in interest of squirming taxpayer dollars, but there are legal causes too. So again, if anyone wants to go to that, I recommend it. It's, most members come back with a favorable review. So, remember, please make the motion to insert those two names.
We've resolved that the following members will represent the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee at the annual MAS-C, MAS-S Joint Conference, November 7th through 10th, 2018. Voting delegate Bonnie De Tomaso. The alternate voting delegate will be Barbara Kraftries.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the MAS-S, MAS-C Joint Conference Registration. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Next topic is the school committee meeting schedule for the following for next year. Beginning in July, you can see that we have, it's basically the same as this year, just a note. We went back and forth. We have the new, our new policy about the February meetings and not wanting to hold a public hearing during, or would normally be during the school vacation week. So our first meeting, which is ten of the budget, is February 7th. Public hearing, February 28th, and the final budget presentation is the, again, the second Thursday of March. So if there was any questions on that, would a member please make the motion to accept this calendar of meetings for the next year?
We've resolved that Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the scheduled meeting dates as printed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this meeting calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Wrapping up here, coming from Status.
What do we have on that?
No?
Status.
No status. Okay. And finally, under the Chair's Report, the school committee election, just a reminder of those who have taken out nomination paperwork. They're due to the towns for which you've received signatures by July 24th, that's a Wednesday. And then you have to retrieve it from them, or they'll mail it to you, depending upon how, whatever you've worked out from arrangement. And then the paperwork has to be to the central office to Greg by August 21st, 5:00 p.m. Now we'll move on to Subcommittee Reports and Recommendations. First up is curriculum. Dr. Kraftries.
Thank you. We had the good pleasure of meeting with Suzanne Coates this evening to talk about an overnight field trip for the Wacona students, too. I'm going to try to say it with a French accent, but correct me. Cote d'Azur, Provence, and Barcelona. How do they do? Okay? So the scheduled trip will take place during February break, so school will not be missed, and teachers will not need to have subs. It's a Saturday to a Sunday. They'll all take a bus down to the JFK and fly together. It's approximately for 12 French and Spanish students, and most likely not freshmen, because they're kind of young for that experience. They are talking about fundraising activities. Both Suzanne and Tracy, the two people who are sponsoring this, are chairs of the class of 2020, so they're very aware of the students and what student needs are, and they're looking for opportunities in the community for fiscal support. And one question I had was to make sure that there wasn't any time for them to be unescorted, and there isn't, so they'll be with adults at all times. And there was really no further discussion, so we made a motion to recommend to the school committee that be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approve an overnight field trip for the Wacona students to Cote d'Azur, Provence, and Barcelona, February 16th through the 24th, 2019, as recommended by the curriculum subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve an overnight field trip for Wacona students to Europe. Is there any discussion? Note how he got out of that. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
It is in Europe, right? Anything else? Okay.
I'm sorry, no. That's it for the curriculum.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Finance?
We have not met, and I have no report. We have no date scheduled.
Okay.
We select.
And moving on to policy.
Yes, so we met on June 12th. And so we have a couple of things that are even on the agenda tonight. So we first went over the bullying prevention plan that is on the website. And so Lori briefed us on what has been done with that so far. So so far, the administrative team, including the vice principals, have met to look at that bullying prevention plan. There's been some redlining and updating of that plan. When we looked at it as a committee, there's a couple of other things that we felt should be changed also or looked at. So they're going to go back and look at that, and then at our next policy meeting, provide us with another update to that plan. But I think the biggest thing that came out of, you know, again, like we've talked about at this committee, is that if we have a plan in place, we need to make sure we're following that plan and make sure that what we have in writing is actually what's going to happen. And I think that's what we are going to hopefully see with the changes in this plan. And then from the discussion that's been, that has taken place with the vice principals at the schools who work on this, that that is what they're trying to align themselves with. So one of the thoughts that we had was to just post this in each office. This is how it works. This is what goes on, and let's make sure that we know what, what is taking place when something happens, all right? So that's our bullying prevention plan. So at the next policy subcommittee meeting, we'll be getting an update, new update on that prevention plan, and then that will be posted on the website. It will be sent out to the school committee to see also. Any questions?
Then that becomes implemented in the fall.
Yes. Okay, so the, we'll do the strategic plan last, since it's a little bit of a presentation. So, policy, we discussed policy 77450, which is about food service. So here's what, what we talked about. This policy now is going to align with MAS-C's policy that was put out in 2016. Some of the discussion we had around this is that students will continue to receive a meal instead of a substitute meal. That substitute meal, which is interesting, is a cheese sandwich. So, you know, this is, so if students' accounts are in arrears, they will not just receive a cheese sandwich, they'll receive an actual meal. That communication around arrears, balances that are in arrears will not be communicated to that student, it'll be communicated to the adult parent or guardian who's in charge of that account. Because as it's written right now, the food service person could actually tell the student that they're in arrears in front of their peers, which is something that, you know, I don't think any of us want, so. So that's a great change. And then account balances will be refunded, so for, for graduating seniors. Right now, the, so the plan is that account balances if they have extra money on their account. So if they're over $4.50, we will send them a check within 30 days. I believe right now it's at 15 days, and this is a realistic turnaround time that the business office feels that they can manage rather than the 15 days. So that's, that's an update on the policy. And so let's, what we decided was we wanted to bring that, make a motion to update that policy and have a first reading.
If it's under 450?
If it's under 450, then I believe we're, unless they request it, we are going to be keeping that money. So they'd have to request the money if it's under $4.50. And in your packet, you'll see it redlined out all of the updates. I just need to get to the, there we go. So, be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved the first reading revisions to policy 7405, students in arrears on payment for school breakfast or lunch, and as recommended by the policy subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a first reading revision of policy 7405. Is there any discussion?
Most of those changes were mandated or recommended by the state or some other external?
MAS-C.
MAS-C.
Am I right in thinking that any balance could also be applied to another child? So if there's another child in the family, they could get that balance?
Yes. So it could be transferred, yes.
They can also donate to another account that they may not be relatives, but they can donate.
The adult would have to, right?
Yes.
Sometimes you get a kid and say, "Oh, let's give everybody a..." "Give everybody a sandwich."
Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay, let's move on to the strategic plan update. So when we met as a committee on Tuesday with Lori, we discussed, and we've been, we have been discussing the fact that, you know, we need to have some visuals that kind of show us where we're progressing in our strategic plan. So this is something that everybody here at the school committee level, plus all of, all of the towns, understand that this isn't just a document that we created just to kind of sit there to say we have a strategic plan, but something we're actually working towards. So with that being four and a half, or about four and a half months into a strategic plan, you know, there's, there's a little to, to discuss. So what, what we decided was, let's pick out one topic out of each of our categories, and let's talk about how we are going to begin to present this twice a year to this full committee and what the progress is. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent to kind of go through where we are.
Okay, and Mr. Hagmeyer, Mr. Peters, and Mrs. Tucker were there, so I will kind of guide through based on what our dialogue was about and my interpretation of how they were recommending we present this to everyone else, but please do jump in and correct me or add or supplement. So like Mr. Hagmeyer said, our goal is both twice a year to bring you an update on new parts of the plan, hoping that by the end of the plan in December of 2021, you'll have had an update on every part of the plan with data to show that we've either met the goals or where we're at and what more we need to do to go into the next strategic plan. And one of the suggestions from, from Mr. Peters was really to focus more on visual presentations of data as opposed to the narrative that we often give, so that you have that, that hard data as to where we're at, which is a great, a great suggestion and something we need to do more of. So this is our kind of first go-around at it. So exactly like, here I'm a little rusty here at this. There we go. So exactly like Mr. Hagmeyer said, again, we're just, this is the presentation that originally had the strategic plan approved, so just to jog your memory as to the contents of it. As you probably recall, it's broken down into four main goal areas, and what we did is exactly that, we drilled into each one and said where, even though it's only been four and a half months, where can we already show some data around progress and what we're focusing on? And we've also tried to keep this at the forefront of our discussions as an administrative team and align it to our goals, so that we are, we're doing the same work and the right work. So for this goal, curriculum instruction and assessment, we decided, and I think it makes sense and it's timely, with the conversations as of late, to really drill down into Goal Three and to look specifically at the goal around all schools will implement PBIS. PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports. We do know that the Department of Education here in Massachusetts, as well as at the federal level, supports inclusive practices. That's a priority that we're guided by, and they're made up of universally designed learning. That's the instructional model. PBIS is the behavioral support model in social and emotional learning. So that is the work we're charged with doing, and it's the work that we are prioritizing here at Central Berkshire. So we drilled down into that, and what we really looked at is some data that we could show, because in order to implement something well, you need to know how to do it. So obviously, being in the beginning stages of the plan, you're going to see things that represent data around training and how many staff members are trained, and then you'll get into the implementation of how they're using it in their practice. So this really shows you just some data around, we had said learning environments will be designed based on the principles of inclusive practices, and all schools will implement PBIS. At this point, we have 100% of staff have been trained in PBIS. We had a professor from, from the University of Massachusetts who travels nationally on this subject area, providing training, providing consultation, who provided training to all of our staff here in district this year. PBIS, though, is the umbrella of how to provide positive behavioral supports for students. There are specific methodologies of how to do that, one being restorative practices, and you'd really have this training before you got into the specifics. And about 29% of our staff have been trained in restorative practices. So that is something, is a tool of how to implement PBIS. We want staff to have multiple tools to do so, but this is the one you'll see most often, discussed at the state level, discussed in educational documents, both, both locally and nationally. So this shows you how many staff have had that training here in our district, either through internal offerings that we've provided or through things they've attended outside of the district with our support. The reality of implementation is the middle and the high schools are in the very beginning phases of implementing. They've been trained, they're having conversations around implementing practices, but that's where they're at. The elementary schools, however, are much farther along, and there's some key examples as to why and some, some data around that. So again, PBIS is about common language and expectations. That's really important for children, that they have a clear understanding on what's expected of them, so they can understand how, how to be successful, and that there's consistency across staff in those expectations. And it might be surprising, but that's not always the case. At our elementaries, they have implemented common language and common expectations schoolwide. And the data to support that is they're on their websites, they're known by the students, they're used in their daily interactions, and this is, is that information there for you. And we'll send this, this out as well, so you have it to reference, and then in addition, it's on the website from the school committee meeting. Additionally, PBIS is about proactive strategies, not waiting for students to have challenges and then responding punitively. Not to say there isn't a consequence part, but you want to avoid that through being as proactive as possible. And why do I say that the elementary is actually at an implementing phase? They have proactive structures in place. They're not something that they do randomly or intermittently or sporadically. They have them in place as part of their school year. And again, here's some examples of that. I'll just pick really quickly, because if you are on Twitter at all, or if you have students or family members in the Kittredge School, you'll know about their superhero program. And that's a way of really kind of, the, the concept of catching students doing it right. So identifying really positive examples in the student body of exemplifying these character traits. There's actually capes and things like that that go with it, and if you follow Kathy Buckley on Twitter, you'll learn a lot about her superhero program. Similar programs are in place at Beckett-Washington and Craneville. Not to say that when you're aligning, everyone doesn't have their own personality. A personality would be superheroes at Kittredge and super citizens at Beckett-Washington. That small difference is okay. The root of it, what their, what their, their goal is, is the same. So it gives buildings personalities, but continues to align. Again, some specifics as to how staff in the buildings at the elementary have actually been trained on implementation versus just on the, the what and the why. I'd say district-wide, we have a baseline of knowledge around what PBIS is and why you do it. But the next step's always the how, and that's where we've made some gains at the elementary with some examples specifically as to what that includes. Any questions on that or add?
Could you just talk real quick, because I thought it was important? Could you just talk real quick about the graduate program that was offered to the teachers for restorative practices and what you see the percentage of teachers actually being trained by the end of the summer and going forward is going to be?
So yes, so I think you're referring to, so staff have been trained in restorative practices. I think that's the next slide. That's our next step. This is actually, so the second one we looked at is innovative teaching and leadership. And where we drilled here was into UDL. So UDL is about the instructional model of how you include all successfully and maintain high standards. PBIS is the behavioral support model. So this is where we looked at UDL. Obviously, you've been hearing a lot about UDL, so you should expect and, and be looking to see that we are actually have data to support what we're doing with UDL. This is going to require a little bit of explanation. So this graph, what it shows you, and it's jargon, but it's jargon we kind of need to use and familiarize ourselves with to fully, to fully understand UDL. When you talk about universally designing learning, you talk about really three main stages of it. And if you, you do work with UDL, you hear these stages. So I don't want to be jargon-heavy, but I want you to be exposed to the jargon. No UDL experience, we don't have that in our district. We're past that. There's really, unless somebody arrives here tomorrow and is hired and they're, they're, if they're right out of school, they're likely coming in with some UDL experience, because they're teaching this now at the college level. But if they've been in the district where they haven't done that work, we have to catch them up. But right now, we don't have that. Exploring UDL, that means you're in the what and the why phase. You're trying to figure out what is this about, why do we do it? And you're doing that and how we decided if you're in exploring UDL. So really, this is a percentage of our staff that have gotten to the point that they're exploring UDL. 53.9% of our staff are still exploring. What is it and why do I do it? How do you explore? In order to explore and be in this category, you have to have done one or several of the following. You've participated in a structured book group. So you've heard about the book groups we have running, and they're Skyping with the actual authors of the books. UDL Now is one of the books. Let Them Thrive... the actual authors of the books. UDL Now is one of the books. Let Them Thrive by Dr. Novak, that Dr. Craftreese has participated in, is one of the books. The books really focus on the what and the why. They touch on the how, but you're still, you're passively reading about it. You've been to a UDL 101 introductory course with Dr. Rodriguez, who is kind of the UDL guru, and you've had that baseline of training. Or you've accessed UDL resources. So all of our principals regularly send out tons of information, articles, rubrics, examples on UDL. You've done that. What makes you go past exploring and into implementing is you've been trained on the how, and you've started to do it. What that means, and that's 37.7% of our staff are implementing it. It's our entire administrative team, that's the vast majority of our elementary teachers, and spatterings of teachers at the secondary level. Give an example, a lot of our math department at the high school has gotten to the implementing stage because they've been trained on the how, and they've started to implement it. To be trained on the how, you've attended a full three-credit graduate course on UDL. For 90-plus percent of the staff, that means you've done it with Dr. Katie Novak in a course we offered onsite. We have a couple of staff members who have accessed courses through college on their own, but the vast majority. The other way is you're participating on the UDL steering committee. That's the group developing the action plan about how we do it here in the district. And you're implementing this in your classroom. The final phase, which is what we want in 2021, the red to be, is called scaling. That means you get the what, you get the why, you could talk about it all day, you know the how, and you're doing it in your classroom, and you can show others, and you could teach others. And you don't need Dr. Katie Novak, and you don't need me, and you don't need Leslie to continue to push you forward. You know how to do it. So if you get a new student with a different kind of need, you know how to apply it for their needs. If a new curriculum comes down the pipe, you know how to apply it. And why do we have 8.4% of our staff who are scaling? That's defined by the following. They've served as a graduate assistant to teach the graduate course under Dr. Novak. They have opened their classroom to learning walks to demonstrate UDL, and then observed to be accurately following the UDL rubric as to what UDL is, instructionally. And they are providing a course on UDL. We've got a few people who actually are at that level, Leslie, who can actually teach others about UDL. And they're leading the work around UDL. So it's not only that you know how, but you're able to demonstrate it to others, and you can apply it to novel things without needing to be retrained or bring an expert back in. Eventually, you don't want to have to hear, as wonderful as they are, Dr. Katie Novak, Dr. Kristen Rodriguez. This should be something we can sustain on our own. So that's the data around where we're at with UDL.
Laurie, are those categories apportioned fairly uniformly throughout the district, or might you find one category is in a grade group or a building group?
Yeah, great question. So if there's a majority here, it's at the K5 level, just purely based on names. Part of that, which is awesome, it'll start to even, because you also think about different staff members, different circumstances, are, different things appeal to them. So we offer a UDL 101 graduate course onsite. They met onsite, so it was live in person. It was very, it got a very high turnout. I think it had 100%, close to 100% from Beckett-Washington and from Kittredge, very, very high percent, very close to that at Craneville. They were allowed to do it in teams, so they could sign up as a grade level. We had a lot of grade levels sign up together. And at the elementary, we found a lot of them really liked that in-person meeting. There's a web-based UDL 101 graduate course this summer. I don't know what, it's getting a lot, it's getting interest from the secondary level. So, you know, kind of giving people multiple choices. But right now, we absolutely have people in implementing at the middle school and the high school. So I give the example, the math department participated in the graduate course from Wacona. We had several different groups from Nessus as well. But majority here is elementary. Really, if we only had a graph for elementary, this red would be this. They're at a very, very high percentage at the elementary level. Scaling is spattered, definitely some spattering, and it's in positions you would expect. People who have gotten into coaching kinds of roles, that kind of thing, if that makes sense. Some of our content leaders. And if you've seen things demonstrated, like if you're on Twitter and you're following certain people, and you're saying, wow, they're putting that out there, other staff members are liking it, other staff members are then trying it, that might be one of these people who I have in this 8%. Does that make sense? But this graph should keep moving, and we want ultimately that to be where we're at. But I am, I'll be, this is one that of everything I'm the most proud of, because I think that's, you know, really huge. We have nobody there. We're very early on, and it's absolutely okay to be here. And again, this is based on data. So are there people here who present like they're here? Sure they are. But I'm doing this data-driven. So I'm not going to put you here if you don't have the data to support it. Are there some people who are here who are putting their toe here? Absolutely, all the time. But they don't have the data yet to support it. So we're moving them according to data, if that makes sense.
What's the data to support it? What, something proves something, that they're in one color or the other?
Yes. So like, if you're, if you have not taken a graduate course in UDL, if you're not on the steering committee, but you've got a knack for this, and you've done the introduction class, and you've got a knack for implementing, I didn't put you here. Because I don't have objective data to say you have the skill set to implement, because then I would be going through the staff and kind of picking and choosing based on my own observations. What we did is we came up with objective criteria. You're here because, you're here because, you're here because, as opposed to saying, oh, well, she's only done a graduate course, but, and I know that she hasn't taught a course, and I know she doesn't do an open classroom, but she could. We didn't do it that way. We kept it so that all of us would find the same results if we did this, if we categorized people, as opposed to me inserting my opinion, which would probably push people up.
I guess the best would be to observe instruction for several classes and see it being done. That would be the best, right?
Yes, yeah, according to a rubric. And all of the people here are at that stage. We see that here, but here we know that they're at that stage. The nice thing about the UDL rubric too is, at some point in a, and Dr. Craftreese has had some experience on this too in the training, so we could do it through curriculum, the UDL guidelines and rubric align to Etaval. So if you're doing UDL proficiently, it aligns to the language in standard one and standard two for Etaval, which is important to the teachers, because they want to know that this is going to be positively seen in their evaluations. So this one is less, obviously, and certainly, Mike, if you want to jump in with this, this is less data-driven. We looked at Goal Three, because that's an area that we think we need to keep the attention on, even though we're not there with like a chart at this point, because we're constantly discussing this. And as I think it's been said accurately, you know, we love the fact that we have a program with Pittsfield, but we've been talking about that for a while. What's our next step? And where can we do that? So this is kind of a coming attraction, but we have been having dialogue for a while now that we have capacity in a couple of areas, and we're starting to reach out. And we do believe that we're moving forward in a direction where we will have some shared services options in the coming months. So that's kind of just, I think, keeping us focused on this one and knowing we're working towards meeting this goal.
Yeah, and I think the other piece to that is, I think we've dipped our toe also in working with the towns on the healthcare piece also, and signing some agreements with the towns, which is part of Goal Three, pursuing shared services with towns in our district also. So that's one of the, one of the other pieces that I think we have started to be involved with.
That says it's only in one direction. Is that the intent?
No, I think the intention is that we continue to explore, and anytime we have capacity, and we think somebody might be a fit for us, and that people bring forth those suggestions and goals. This might be one that, you know, we keep on this regularly, just to kind of say, okay, we said we're almost there. Are we still saying we're almost there in two years, or do we actually do something? Some of it seems to be, though, striking not only when the, I don't know, when the iron's hot here, but when somebody else has the right match.
That says that we're not going outside the district. We're, we have our availability here. What if there's an availability somewhere else?
Hope for someone to share with us, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we were doing that with Pittsfield, right? So there's going to be a variety of options that are available when they present themselves, right? We have some capacity in a couple of areas now. We're looking to share some of those services with other folks, you know, to help share the burden. The Pittsfield example is, Pittsfield had capacity, and we had the need, so we worked with Pittsfield, the shared services. So it's going to go both ways. I think the one with the towns is more of building a relationship with the towns. We're offering opportunity for the town to, you know, leverage our relationship in the insurance area. But there's, you know, you don't even know what's going to present itself as far as capacity goes in other towns, or where the shared services can come from. But the fact that, you know, we're open to all sorts of options and expect the shared services, and we're keeping an eye on that is what's important.
I think you bring up a good point, though. With this actual piece in the strategic plan is, we may want to add, as this is a living document, the fact that not only do we have the capacity to provide services to neighboring districts, but we want to explore services that neighboring districts may be able to offer to us. So I think we want to add that to the strategic plan to make it-
It's inherent in the definition, right, of shared services, right?
Yeah, I just think what we say is that it's something we're going to provide to them. But I think if we add that extra little piece, that we're going to also look to continue to our neighbors, right, for possible services. I think that broadens-
If that's what you want to do, is just an update of language, bring it back to the committee to vote for an update.
Okay. So it's not to that point that was just made by several people. On the next one, one is, you know, which is, you always want to see yourself meeting goals. Sometimes you meet them by default, because you knew you would, in some ways. So we did look at Goal Three, but sometimes, I think with this plan, it's not always going to be because we can meet and say, here's some great data. Sometimes we have to meet and say, we need to really collect some better data than we currently are. So kind of keeping us honest with the plan is also us reflecting. So I'll give the example of that. So we looked at Goal Three. We said we developed a partnership with MSBA. We're meeting our timelines. We've got a really functional group. We are doing well with this. This is going well. It's going in the right direction, as I think we expected it would with the, with the staff involved and the oversight of it through the project management and the design team. So that's great. But on this one, is there another one? Let me go back. On this one, what we actually discussed was, okay, plan proactively for the needs of all school facilities and continue routine walkthroughs. So Melissa and I are really happy with our, is it triannual? Is that how you discuss, you describe it? Our triannual walkthrough process that we've implemented. Building principals do monthly walkthroughs with Mr. Dion and their head custodian. Melissa, myself, head custodian, Jason Dion walk through the buildings before they open at the start of the school year, in the mid-year point, and then when they close for the year. So, but one of the things that Mr. Peters brought to our attention is, well, that's great, and you follow a checklist, and you know you're doing things, but you have data to show. This many things were identified, this many were resolved, this many were referred to a later priority, that kind of thing. So could you create something like this? And no, we couldn't. So one of the things that we discussed is that we would create an ability to track improvements in data tied to those, that we could be able to share with this committee. Did I do that justice? Basically, we needed to go back and say, okay, you're tracking UDL really well, you're tracking PBIS really well. Are you tracking it, or are you just solving problems, and maybe you can't bring that data for it, because you didn't keep the data of what you solved? You solved it, or you referred it to a later date, but you didn't track it the right way, as well as it could be to be presented to this committee. So sometimes I think there's some of that that we need to do, just like with the potential of adding something to the strategic plan. The only thing that, just to kind of, we already looked at, that I wanted to mention is, some of these might become, like, I was thinking that this goal should always be part of our fall strategic plan update, because this one will have the most data available. So it's almost going to have to happen like the next three years consecutively. That if we don't do this goal now, it's because we're waiting for that data, but it's always on the agenda when we do that update in the fall. So that kind of thing. That's why we started to kind of look at ones that are time-sensitive, as to when the best data will be available. Actually, though, if things keep going the way they will, there could be a day that we get MCAS data in June, but, I don't know, but it could be, that could be a change at some point. So that's what I-
You've covered it.
We had?
Yep.
Anything?
Perfect.
All right.
Thanks, Tony.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
It's a balancing.
Thank you. Next is personnel, and I believe will be, there's no objections to throwing that to the end of the meeting, because we will need an executive session. Technology, Mr. Les isn't here this evening. I don't think they've had a meeting.
There is.
Wacona Building Project. Tell you where we are with that. The building project newsletter is in our packet. The community nights are next week. Tuesday, the 19th, the first one's at the Windsor Town Hall at 5:00 PM, and the second one will be at Wacona here at 7:00 PM. Then on Thursday, the 21st, the first one at 5:00 PM will be at Beckett-Washington Elementary School, and the second one at 7:00 PM will be at the Kittredge Elementary School. So there's been, there were two meetings today. One of the building subcommittee in late afternoon and late, late afternoon, the Wacona Building Committee. Skanska and DRA were here this evening, and it's basically preparation for the community nights next week. But they did come forward. Remember, they had, if you recall, they had nine new construction options. They had four add slash renovation options, and then there's a baseline repair. So they presented those tonight. They have called it down to two, two, I'm not sure I got it right, addition renovation, and they've called it down to three, new construction, and then the base repair. Basically, the new construction, or I'm sorry, the, I want to go in order on this. The baseline repair is basically just going through the building and fixing what needs fixing. So they did provide some prices tonight, but it's ranges. And I'm going to give you what the top range is, and for the baseline repair was about 38 million. And that is not reimbursable whatsoever. Okay? The MSBA does not reimburse that. Did I get that correct, right, Bonnie?
Yes.
Okay. The next level is the addition renovation. And basically, what they had was, I want to make sure I get this right. So they had one configuration where Wacona, as the building stands as it is, and they go through and they update it to be 21st century as best as they can. They add another hallway, if you will, which we call, they would call F-core at the end of the building. And then the middle part of the building would be entirely renovated. This would be in phases. That would take, they said, three school years. I counted more upwards of four, but probably three school years. And they'd have to go through and renovate everything, so they have to, they had a four-phased approach. That's why it takes so long, because they've got to go through sections of the school at a time. They'd have to bring in some portable classrooms to accommodate that. It would be really disruptive, as you can imagine, because they've got to block areas off that are being renovated. Staff and students can only be in the one area that's not being renovated. They would do areas like the cafeteria, the gym, the auditorium, I think, in the summertime. Yeah, those would all be done in the summertime, so it would be the least disruptive for those. Basically, everything else in the ground stays the same. The other option would be that they retain the front end of the building, which would be from the auditorium all the way over to the gymnasium. Now, those would still be completely renovated, but then they would add on a new wing off to the east of the school, that direction beyond the gymnasium. That would be a two-story, which was more in keeping with the design that they're looking for, the modular odd-type design, if you remember that term from last time. So those are the two addition renovations, and I think, you know, even those were upwards of a top price of, I'm trying to think, it was around 60, 60 million, might have been the top end. Now, that does have, that does have MSBA helping out. There's parts of those, there are elements of those prices that are non-reimbursable. So anything that's reimbursable, it would be around 50%. The other design, the completely new school buildings, is probably is the least disruptive, because they can set aside the whole area where the building's being put up and keep the high school intact for those years. I think they were saying those are somewhere between upwards of two school years. So it's pretty quick. And they kind of implied that it could be done even quicker than that, more quickly. So that would be, the phases- So that would be, the phases there would mostly involve, you know, where the new building area would be, they'd have to have access roads, service entrance into this building. Couple different options there. They had one option where it would be actually in the front of the building, extending into the parking lot, and the two other options were, I said there were four, but there were three. I did say three. The other two options would be on the east side of the building. So basically taking the parking lot over into the baseball field. And then what happens is, when this building is raised, then they would have room for what they call green space or other ball fields that would replace what was being taken from the new building. The price on that was upwards of 68 million. So by the time you get through the end of this, you've got not much difference between, you know, what would happen for base repair, which basically gives you the same building updated. And again, it would be the same footprint, everything would pretty much be the same. Or a brand-new building that would be upwards of, I'm sorry, 80 million.
Is it probably reimbursable, 80?
Oh, yeah. So that's the same thing. Anything that, the only thing that's not reimbursable is what they call the base repair, baseline repair. Everything else would have elements of it that, there's non-reimbursable cost, you know, which is probably 15 to 20%, 10 to 20% is what they were saying is typical. And then the other part, which is reimbursable, for us right now, is 54%.
Yes, but the MSBA also has a max.
Oh, the max of?
$333.
But that goes into the non-reimbursable, anything above that.
Yeah, so if our percentage is like 54%, typically, you can see a 35 to 40% reimbursement rate on the total.
So I'm trying to see if, or if I've forgotten anything on here. The other part of this, which I should've started with, is the PDP, which we all spoke about and voted on.
Just one comment I think that is important to clarify is that part to let the towns know, is the cost of the renovation versus building new, the cost of a town is gonna be very similar.
Yeah.
Because the renovation, because a lot of people are gonna want a renovation instead of building new, they're gonna see that 38 million price tag, but that 38 million is paid completely by the towns.
Right.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah.
But, so they have this question that they're gonna be showing at the meeting, and it's got all the pros and cons. If you look over here, green is good, red is bad, yellow's kind of in between. So this is the base, this is the base repair here. This is the addition renovation. It was the first option I told, where they basically add the hallway at the end. The next one is basically keeping the front part of the building, but adding on the side. And then these three are just three different configurations they had for buildings being, either in the front of the building, where it is now, or off to the side.
I just wanted, I just wanted everybody to, when you're in conversations with people, that you understand that's a very important point.
It is.
You know, they can't highlight all your, the MSBA, they almost force you. They almost make it silly not to build a school, really, the way the whole deal is set up. You know, they, you know, puts it in red, so you say, well, renovation is- It's almost a no-brainer, because it's the same cost as a town, only you don't have your old school built, you have a brave building. And that's the kinda language you gotta be using when you're talking to people in a meeting, I think, because it's, they kinda force it that way, but hey, it's the reality of the situation.
They also mentioned that, I'm sorry, they also mentioned that in some of the options, that there would have to be some temporary storage, you know, in the renovation, and that the temporary storage, you mean physically moving furniture and storing it, and then moving it back, and the cost of actually transporting that would not be eligible for reimbursement. So that's also another factor that would come into play.
Trust me, I won't be giving this presentation next week. They will be making all those points. So I'm just trying to give you the highlights of this. I would, I would, they don't know this yet, but I would like to get them, SCANSCA and DRA here for the 24th. I think that'd be an opportune time to go over what happened at the community meetings, as well as giving you the updates from this perspective. I mean, you've seen the building designs already, but you'll see the ones that they're recommending to put forward.
I had a question. At a former meeting a few months ago, there was a discussion about maybe doing a model school. Is that still on the table, or is that, is that one of the options of the new building?
I don't think so.
No?
That could come up, though. We could definitely have an answer prepared. I, we haven't had that discussion in a while, and I know there was dialogue around white phased out, but I think that we could be clearer on that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll actually send it to this committee and get that from John Benson at SCANSCA.
Okay.
It's a good question.
So what I was starting to say before was, the PDP, the building design package, was submitted on May 7th. We've not heard about MSBA yet, and SCANSCA's been after them, trying to find out a why, because it usually doesn't take this long. They don't know what that means, and that's what John admitted today, they don't know what that means. But at this point in time, the PSR, which is Preferred Schematic Report, has officially begun that phase of the project. That's all I have on Wacona Building Project. Anybody? All right, so we'll move on to, unless there's any other questions, we'll move on to the superpowers reports.
What date is it?
It is, that will be Tuesday at 7:00 PM. I don't know, where's, is it held in this room?
The cafeteria is where we've been today. So if they wanna be, can I hurry? Cafeteria, we'll stick with cafeteria. That's where, cafeteria.
That's what it says, yes.
Stick with that.
Thanks.
So just a couple end of the year highlights. We still get some things that are coming, but the graduation was another success. They run a very student-focused, very efficient graduation. And again, thank you to those who were able to join us. It has really become a nice tradition that we also have the full administrative team there, so the principals from all levels do come, as well as the vice principals, to support the students and to support their colleagues, Mr. Robb and Mr. Messina, in facilitating the graduation.
I'm having choice.
Great humor roll. Dr. Craftries and Mr. Hopper were able to sit back and enjoy, hopefully, you with the stress, but we had much slower readers this time as far as names on diplomas. Last year, we were throwing things at each other to keep up. So there's an article in The Eagle, it talks to some of the speeches that were given. If you haven't had a chance, it also was, Mr. White also did livestream it, so that's a nice option for families who can't make it. We've also started a nice tradition here as the senior walkthroughs. Seniors go back through their elementary schools. We have seniors who go to each of the elementary schools. It's a very popular event for both the seniors as well as the younger students, and this year they finished off at the middle school and were able to see their teachers there and the students there, and that was a great addition. The teachers there really appreciated it. Again, Mrs. Lake Davis, this is our third annual district-wide Battle of the Books that she is responsible for, has become a very large success in the district, is the sport every year. There was a sweep from Craneville, so we did have, the top three teams this year were from Craneville. But an excellent, not only event, but the concept around it, the kids are engaging in reading, they're having dialogue about the content of the books, and they're being kind of rewarded in a competitive way for something that's not the traditional sports. What I wanted to highlight, though, and thank you again to Dr. Craftries, who was a judge, but also if you look at the, at the range of judges that we had, it was really kind of impressive, the people who are willing to give their time. So thank you very much to Dr. Craftries, to Ms. Velkowsky. And then when you look at it, we had a police officer from Beckett, Hinsdale, the chief from Hinsdale, Trupa Kanata was there. So really, we're very fortunate for the support that we get around this program. There is the Battle of the Books. We started it this year at Nescus successfully. It's on a smaller scale. They're battling each other, so we're not battling another middle school, and that's taking place tomorrow. So we'll let you know how that goes. The update on the Nescus Middle School, kind of, there's several different updates just to provide. The search process has begun for a principal. I gave you some history, because I think it's important to know the history to date as to where we've been and how we got to where we are. We are in a better place timing-wise than we've been. We did get a very late resignation from the principal, who resigned in August of 2016. That's not an ideal time, obviously, to be looking for a principal. And we got a very late resignation in September of 2017. So at this point, we're in much better shape, and Mr. Amarcost and Dr. Craftries, you are a busy lady. I keep saying your name. It's a good thing, there's certain people, I'm like, you're getting very busy. I hear my name a lot, so wow. You're in that group. Are on the search committee for the principal. It's being chaired by Mr. Robb from Wacona, which I'm extremely appreciative to him to doing that, and we have a very well-represented committee with parents and staff members. The goal is to have two to three candidates to recommend to me the week of June 22nd. We do know that it is a very important role to fill, and their ultimate goal is to bring forth candidates they're fully confident in, not just to bring forth candidates. So that's really the priority right now. So I'll have an update as to how that goes at the next meeting. So that is really that. If there's any questions on the history, I won't go through all of those different kinds of changes, but you can always certainly reach out, and I can clarify whatever you have questions on. I do wanna clarify, and I clarified today, which I think was really helpful with some of the middle school staff, I do believe, and I have said this, that there is a concern with the culture. That is not a concern with the staff, that is not a concern with the students, that is not a concern with any specific component. Things are coming together in a way at times that don't have the intense, don't have the impact that we're looking for, and as a result, the culture is not as positive for many, many people, and for many reasons as it could be. Doesn't mean that there aren't wonderful educators, and there aren't great kids, and there aren't great things happening, but we need to do some work around that to make sure everyone feels more positive and feels more supported. So oftentimes, you use the term "school culture," and people can feel, well, is that about me? Is that about something I'm doing? And that is not the case, and I really do need to emphasize that. So they have been doing some work, and this is a difficult time of year to engage in difficult work. So fatigue and frustration are high in June, as anybody who's been an educator knows, and the middle school staff has been extremely open and dedicated to working on difficult work to do in October, in June. So I appreciate that. They're working with a consultant, David Summergrad. Mr. Amarcost actually had the opportunity to meet Mr. Summergrad. He has developed a very positive relationship with the majority of our staff and our administrative team, everyone he's had the opportunity to work with. And what he has done is, he spent a lot of time with them as individuals, culminating in a full staff meeting on June 11th that he facilitated with them. And I'll talk a little bit about that, but I included his recommendations. So he knows this staff well, he knows the district well, and I think that that's important to note. He's not, while he's an outside consultant with objectivity, he knows who we are, which is also important. He knows our resources, he knows our student population, and he knows our history, and he knows our goals going forward. So his recommendations, some of them you'll see are already in place as to what we're doing and why, and some of them we're continuing to prioritize. One of the things I think that I want to emphasize is developing a clear, common set of expectations for student behavior. Student behavioral expectations and even consequences are not opposed in any way to restorative practices or PBIS. They're absolutely a part of that. So that concept of, you know, is restorative practices, the bad example would be, you know, I just sent the student out of class and they're back in my room with a bag of Skittles. That's not restorative practices, that's restorative practices gone wrong. And thinking that at times, there's not gonna be a consequence, and even a severe consequence, does not go against restorative practices. A restorative practice is righting a wrong, it's moving forward, it's restoring the harm, and it really is really looking at reducing recidivism. So most students who have behavioral challenges, it's not the first time, right? It's usually not the second time. Restorative practices tries to make sure it's the last time, and that the harm is remedied to go forward. Doesn't mean there wasn't a consequence, but hopefully there's not gonna be 10 more, because that's just not effective. So when David talks about numbers three and numbers four, they're very much aligned to PBIS. Number five as well, and we have to do some work to make sure everyone understands that and that it's implemented in a way that everyone feels good about that, because restorative practices definitely did not come to the district with one administrator or one staff member. It's a very well-vetted, evidence-based approach to inappropriate behavior at multiple levels, whether it's at a school-based level or at a more significant level in a community. So we really need to do some education with not only students, and not only staff, but also with parents, to understand what restorative is about. The easiest example of restorative is vandalism of property. It gets a lot more sensitive and complicated when it's a harm to an individual, if I think about reasons why. So there's some really great examples around that with them, and you may have seen that. I think when Mr. Velkowsky did a training, there was that awful situation, the burning of the bridge that was beloved in the community, and how the young men who were responsible for that were able to work with the Historical Society and members of the community who were devastated to restore that relationship in the community. And often, there's examples around that, of destruction of property, things like that, but it's absolutely used to rebuild relationships as well. So that was one of the recommendations. Again, we do have to kinda come back to, at the end of the day, we did have a comprehensive program review that gave us some pretty specific instructional recommendations, and Leslie Blake Davis has been working with teachers who are really working hard on those, and they need to be a real part of the work for next year. David feels strongly that the workshop model is moving us in the right direction. Our initial observations of some of the very preliminary data we have in indicates that is the case, and we really wanna keep that going. So while you're making some shifts, I think he's trying to lay the foundation of, you have some really good things that are happening, and you wanna stick with those. And again, some other are curriculum-based. Just a couple things, too, that, what do we do right now? What should we add? And we've been kinda looking at adding different things of, what do we do when students are either, A, having trouble as a victim, or as an aggressor? Because when you think about it, these are not students who are going to not be in our school system or in our community. The best work we can do is to help them be more successful. We do that in multiple ways. Our relationships within the community are often tapped into, as well as our resources in the school. By that, I literally mean our resources with the local police department at times. They take a restorative approach. They take a PBIS approach, especially when they're working with young children, and middle school students are young children. So really trying to proactively prevent things by building relationships. You saw how many took the time to be at the Battle of the Books, but also trying to mitigate things from escalating when they see something starting. And a conversation with a police officer and a parent can go a long way at the middle school level to prevent certain things from escalating at the high school level. And at the high school level for preventing things from escalating as an adult. So those are things that we do regularly, and we are lucky to have police departments that are not only open to that, but are happy to do it and are very skilled in doing it. The other thing recently, and I just wanted to bring to your attention, we did get an opportunity to participate, and I hope that I explain it well, in a program through the Anti-Defamation League, that Joanne Dowling is going to be going to some extensive training on this summer. And it's called the World of Difference Program, and it's actually at a county-wide level. And it's really peer education around peers supporting each other around kind of issues that can be bias-related and lead to bullying, and how peers can help to mitigate those and help to resolve them under the leadership of a trained staff member. And there's some pretty extensive training, and they're only offering it to certain districts who decided to participate within the county, and to an administrator from that district who's willing to come forward and get the training to help to train the kids. So I'll share more about that when Mrs. Dowling completes that training this summer and we start to put that into place. But I just wanna, any questions on any of that? The next part, again, you know, and, because it is, the next two things just kinda show, you know, well, because it all, honestly, there's a lot going on. So you're talking kind of, you know, about middle school staff doing this heavy lifting around trying to work with a consultant to move forward, to look at a climate, as well as, the next one directly impacts our middle school staff as well. Now you're switching hats, and you're participating in Eureka training. So you know the curriculum, Subcommittee brought forth the proposal to implement the Eureka curriculum. We're already moving forward with that. Leslie organized an excellent training with a Massachusetts-based educator, which is important, because a curriculum is only really materials around instruction. It has to align to our standards. So we've already had the first training around that. We'll have additional training in the fall. Eureka is a unique program, so we are going to be doing parent training as well to accompany it, but just sometimes you approve something, and then it's like, well, what happened? The materials arrived and you rolled it out? No, there's a lot of staff professional development to support that piece of it. Eureka is heavy lifting on the part of teachers, but it is, I think, very compatible with universally-designed learning, so that's a real positive for it, and we're really gonna have to provide a lot of support to do that, to support- to do that, to support teachers in doing that well. A nice, nice piece of data that Erin Robb really, and myself, had looked at closely for both the middle and the high school. So every single year since I've been here, we do student survey data. We're required to include student input in edeval for staff. So there's a few different ways you can do it, but the state, when they put this requirement in, they developed these surveys, and you can use them or you can modify them and get state approval. We, in most cases, adopted what the state had, we did a few different tweaks with the K-2-1, and we give them out annually. The students participate, the students fill out the surveys. Secondary students often do two surveys for two teachers, and then the teachers receive the survey feedback, they use that in their self-assessment and their goal-setting. We don't receive the survey data for individual teachers, we receive it in the aggregate for the school. And so Erin had actually noticed this first and had been starting to do some diving into it, and then when we looked at the middle school, it was really strong there as well. So excellent data from the middle school as well as the high school. So it went up in all areas from 2017 until the spring of 2018. So these are students taking the survey about their experience in the classroom. They're very specific questions. They're not like, "Do you like your teacher?" They're not, "Do you like your school?" They're about the instruction. And so one of the things that we were really happy about, the biggest jump at the middle school, there's every category at the middle school went up. And a lot of these are the same kids, because it's, you know, our current sixth graders are now our seventh, our seventh are now our eighth. So the biggest jump though at middle school is in assessment, and here's an example of a question that had the biggest jump. So this is an example of a question under assessment, and this is the question that had the biggest jump. "In this class, students are allowed to work on assignments that interest them personally." That's up 15 points from last year. That's UDL. That's one of the major goals about UDL. Students who are passionate about what they're learning are going to be more successful. I say students, and I mean students from ages three to 100. That's a reality, right? And kids are feeling that. Fifty-one percent to 63% is pretty big. At the high school, just a really quick-
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
One thing that struck me was, you said that students at the secondary level will perform at least two evaluations?
Yeah.
So is there anything here in terms of it was more closely aligned to UDL history? You might not have gotten as much data from math or a science class? Or was it, again, I'll use the unified across the school in terms of all the subjects and teachers?
I don't know, because I only receive it in the aggregate, as far as through the company, because it's so, the teachers only receive their individual. As long as, I think the agreement with the CBA, which I understand, as long as I could not use that data to be able to specifically tell, for example, individual teachers, like a department's big enough, I could probably get, we could get the data broken down. The middle school gets a little bit, you know how you can reveal data in so much as it doesn't reveal the individual's identity through personnel, just like with kids? At the high school, I probably could. Some of the middle school departments are very small.
My only concern is that the data could be skewed that way.
Yep.
I mean, it's all good data, but I'm surprised that everything's positive. There's no downward numbers.
Again, this is not about, so it doesn't mean that a student might not sit down. So our students just sat down in eighth grade and in 10th grade. They took school climate data. That is very, very different data. Could that data be different? Of course it could. What is an example of a question here, though? "My teacher asks us to summarize what we have learned in the lesson." There is nothing on here that's about peer to peer. Not that I'm saying that, you know, we've gotten some really good data in those areas as well before, and we've gotten some concerning data, but just to remember, it's very interesting data. "My teacher demonstrates that mistakes are a part of learning." So it's really, really not about, "Do you like your teacher?" Nothing about your interactions with your peers, nothing about your interactions in the halls or anything like that. It's an interesting survey. "Students, after I get feedback from my teacher, I know how to make my work better. When asked, I can explain my learning and why." So that's really, that's really what that data is. So with one of the examples that Erin gave as well, and the other thing you kind of want to be aware of, teachers got this data last year. So if you weren't happy with your data and you made some changes, you might be seeing some changes. They saw this data. And we had some people last year who were not so excited about their data, and kind of said, "I want to see this, I want to know more about it." Erin also has been sharing it out now for a while and giving a lot of kind of feedback around it, like, "Let's look at this, we're really excited about this, can we push here?" One of the things he had really highlighted was, "In this class, students are asked to teach a part or whole lesson." And that was something, a huge push at the secondary. Does the teacher do all the talking? Do the students own any of the learning? If you were in the visioning sessions for a new Wocona, that came up a lot. Well, you kind of want to see an impact. Mr. Robb and the teachers here at Wocona are talking a lot about, "Let go of a lecture, let the kids do the talking." Over time, we should see that people are seeing that, the kids are seeing that. Again, I can't tell you that it's not that the vast majority of it is in two or three subject areas versus equitable, but the overall data was a positive for us.
Do we have any prepared data for other schools?
No, because they, you wouldn't know if they, first of all, so a couple things. There was so much pushback when this came out in the regulations. It came out that it was going to be student survey data, it was going to be staff survey data, it was going to be parent survey data, and Desi really pulled back on it. So what they decided is, is you have to do it, how you do it is up to you. We do it through a company called Panorama, that actually calculates all of the data for us, provides it back, gives the teachers pretty extensive reports. A different district could do it completely differently. So it's kind of a, it's a statewide, "You must do something," it's a locally decided "How you do it." If that makes sense. But we will be able to, so-
So why don't we do cultural peer question?
Because that, this is for a specific reason. So the Department of Ed and edeval says, "You must do these questions."
Sure. Well, why don't we expand it, Steve?
We do, but not tied to individual teachers. We do this social-emotional survey data that's done by the state that will come out in the fall. So this is really, in the teacher's contract, that they have to have student survey data that they have to consider in their evaluation. So we bargained over this to agree to how this would be done, if that makes sense. So that's kind of the point of it. If that makes sense? It's not the end-all and be-all by any means, but, you know, there were a couple things that I do think, it wasn't that I said, "Why did assessment go up?" And then it's like, "Oh, that's random." Well, teachers are taking graduate courses and spending extensive amount of time trying to make kids more interested in what they're teaching, as opposed to everyone's reading Lord of the Flies. Do kids feel that after a couple years? They're starting to feel that, which we want to see. Next year, we'll have three years of it, so will we continue to see a trend? Any other questions on it? If you really want, the next time when I bring it, I'll bring you the K-2, that includes happy faces, sad faces. So if you really got questions about it, you're going to have more then. And is it really back? The best chance we have of saying there's some reliability around it is at the secondary level.
So I just wanted to jump back to your timeline that you had on the Nescus administration, which I didn't realize that within the past two years, you've had so much turnover there. But have we thought of as a school committee, as a district, that we already do it exit interviews?
Yes, we do have exit interviews.
Do we look at that as-
Exit interviews for the staff?
Staff, administration.
Yeah. I was wondering if we do exit interviews with kids, seniors?
I have, actually. When I first, the lunch pitch I did with all the seniors to get all the different kinds of feedback, and now it's become more of Erin and Steve's practice, which is absolutely fine and should be. So Erin and Steve do collect information and data from the seniors on a less formal basis, and I had done that when I first started here, because it wasn't in place at the building level. I think that their culture, it makes sense for it to be more of a building-driven activity. But we do have a staff exit survey, and it goes right into Google Survey, and I receive it directly. So every time a staff, and most people complete it. I mean, I think we get, most people return it. It doesn't matter if you're retiring, if you're reduction in force, every reason you complete the district is included, and you're automatically sent that, and you fill out the survey and you provide feedback.
Do you include them?
So yes, we do.
And do we know what that is?
Do I know what the survey is? Yep. And usually I'll sit down, go over it with whoever the supervising administrator was. You know, so if we get survey data back, we'll go over it with that, and then I'll usually include themes around, like I've done themes to the administrative team on exit interview surveys. I don't share beyond the supervisor, so-and-so said, I'll more do themes if it's at a district level. So the only thing I would caution is, right now on the survey, it specifically says, "This exit survey will be shared with the superintendent and your building supervisor." So I would want to have full disclosure that somebody would now know, and would that change their willingness to respond, that kind of thing.
Yeah. My thought with principal exit interviews, vice-principal exit interviews, you are the person who they report to. So making sure that I think a Personnel Subcommittee, the chair of the school committee, had access to see those exit interviews, I think are important aspects to see, because I think as someone leaves, I think questions with regards to management and things like that are questions that should be asked of people. And so if I'm sending an exit interview to my own manager, I might not always say some things that I might want to say, or might, you know what I'm saying?
I feel like you're asking about a survey about me.
No, no, no.
This survey is about my management of the district, and there are questions like, "In your experience in the district, did you feel you received appropriate professional development? In your experience in the district, did you feel like you had an open way of communicating with your, you know, that kind of thing? Is there things we could do better? What is your reason for leaving for me to manage the district and/or share it with the others responsible?" And I've gotten some pretty candid feedback, and I think it meets the need that, it was the same process I had in place when I was the Director of Personnel in the previous district. We had an exit interview process. So when I got here, I decided that I wanted to have an exit interview process. So I created an exit survey based on my previous experience, and I created it for the purpose of informing me as to, so I could make adjustments or move the district forward or know how people were feeling.
I think that's great, that there's an exit interview. That's huge. My only concern being administrators, someone else also reviewing those exit interviews too, would be something I think the personnel might want to look at.
Well, certainly, I mean, the exit interviews that we have at our facility, I mean, you have an exit interview with, not with your boss, you have an exit interview with HR, you know, somebody independent away from the situation, so you can speak candidly about things that are going on.
Obviously, if you're the boss, if you don't want to know the answer to a question, you don't ask that question.
Exactly.
So, you know, it's good to have somebody away from it to, you know, to ask the questions. They can be all formulated beforehand, but-
Well, the other thing, it sounds like your exit interview is an online survey.
It is.
It's not a one-on-one, face-to-face, so people will probably speak more candidly that way as well.
And we'll stay. Interestingly, when I first got here, I set it up through what our version of HR is, and one of the questions was, "If you would like to set up a time to meet with me, please let me know." Well, people did ask to do that, but they wanted to meet with me, not the HR person. So that's just, I don't know if that speaks to our culture, I don't know what that speaks to, but there was kind of this idea of exactly what you're saying, because when I was in my previous district, I was the Director of Personnel, and people would meet with me, they wouldn't meet with the superintendent. But here, I would, and then they'd be calling Greg, and you're like, "Can I meet with Lori?" So, which is absolutely fine and wonderful, I'm happy to meet with people, but that seems to be like our culture, as opposed to I'll go to HR for that, we're just not, we don't have that size of an infrastructure. So, you know, John Martin completed one, Jim Conroe completed one, I don't know if Tracy did, but people have kind of given us, and some people ask to meet and some don't. But yeah, it seems to be a-
Are you looking to see if there's some themes that maybe the district can respond to?
I'm just, so I think it's important that the superintendent gets, like, teacher exit interviews. I think it's important that you also see administrative ones, right? But being the direct supervisor of those administrative people, I think, not only for you, but for the school committee, to have access to also see what those exit interviews look like for the administrative people of the district.
Well, the other thing that's very relevant, and I think maybe the personnel media is working on this, and I hope they are, but, I mean, there's something going on here. We've had three quick switches at the principal level at Nescus. That shouldn't be happening, and maybe it's coincidence, I have no idea, but certainly helps somebody looking at that and saying, "What's going on here?" And, you know, taking a deep dive into that, and exit interviews be one of the ways to do it.
Well, I think we are. And what I will say is, I created that exit interview survey. I created it with a purpose. That was my work. And I brought it to this district, and it serves my work well, and I think that it's been a valuable tool. If you have a desire to create something different, I think you're talking about something different, and I kind of feel like that that's my work being taken and used in a way it wasn't intended for, and I would have concerns with that. As far as the situation at Nescus, I don't have concerns around a transparent conversation about that. I mean, we know why our position originally opened, we know that. People don't stay in positions forever. And we did have a previous principal who had been here for a period of time. Certainly, this district has benefited from some long, long-serving principals, which is not always the case. And we had, I think, you know, what have we had, three principals in Wocona's history? That's unique. But the principal who was here when I was here, had been here for a period of time, we know why he decided to move on. And then we've had two significant challenges since, and we've had challenges for reasons. It was not coincidental. They were challenges, we have looked at them. There were some factors around that, our tidings around some things were difficult. But I think that one of the things, as Mr. Summergrad had recommended, and fortunately we can, I don't know if we could do that if it was October again, or even if it was August, but he had felt strongly that we need a very transparent process to find the next principal, and that that process needed to include a full search with a committee member on it, with staff members on it, staff members being the majority, that was one of his main priorities. Nescus staff had to make up the majority of that committee, and they have to have the opportunity to go through that process as a group, because really, that was a very limited opportunity when they replaced Mr. Martin, and it wasn't an opportunity this past time. There was not that opportunity. And they may understand why in certain, but it doesn't, it still didn't feel right to them. So they need to have an option to go through that process and to look at that, if that makes sense.
It makes sense. And so I want to say this, I've heard nothing but good feedback from any administrator about what you've done. I think for, for a manager to, someone who's in charge, to get the direct exit interview and not share that, I think there's room for people to question what's in an exit interview. So my thought to protect what you're getting back is that the Personnel Subcommittee might want to be able to look at them at some point, that's all. If there is negative back about the district coming out of that or negative back towards you, you don't want to just hold on to that. So I think it's important that people are able to see that, if that was ever the case.
Oh, I mean, people who are, you think about it, you think about Mr. Summer, this goes to every person who leaves for any reason.
Right.
It doesn't matter if you work in the cafeteria and your position was just cut. It does not matter if you're a paraprofessional and you decide to take a teaching position at HUSK, and it doesn't matter if you're a career principal who retired, or if you're Mr. Falcowski, the same information is collected for everybody. The biggest surprises are people you don't know well. I mean, I am more than aware of the situation right now with our administration at Nescus, and I think that it's reflected in the steps we're taking to find the next building.
Well, we'll talk about this at Personnel sometime, but it's not like this happened, these changes happen in a vacuum or that nobody from the school committee hears, because often, I'm sure that Sean hears a lot from Lori, and I know I hear a lot from Lori. And we don't have that much, really, that happens, so it's, usually we have an explanation, and sometimes it's shared with the rest of the committee and other times it's not, for, you know, there are lots of reasons you don't want to talk about it, because all of our meetings are public. So that makes it awkward. But it's not like Lori's not sharing it with, I can only speak for myself, but I'm aware of a lot of things before, and we decide what we're going to do next, and if, you know, she'll say, "We're going to do, we're going to do a search, and we're going to do this," and sometimes we'll argue, sometimes, well, most of the time we don't, but she's stubborn.
She's stubborn.
She's stubborn. But I know I try and think about what she's doing and to what extent the folk, I mean, the Subcommittee or the folk committee should be involved. the subcommittee or the full committee should be involved.
Well, I think that if you're a personnel committee, and you're discussing something with the superintendent, you should certainly come forth with that information to the committee. You're not a committee in yourself, you're a chairman of a committee.
You have to make a-
You should share that information.
You have to make a decision.
Yeah, you make a decision, and your decision should be to share that with the rest of the committee.
So you'd be surprised at what you talk about.
I am being surprised right now by-
And it's, remember, it's an open session, and people leave for a variety of reasons, some of them personal. And you don't want to talk about that in with minutes and with reports. And I think we have talked about various changes in the personnel subcommittee, and we wouldn't be able to talk, we wouldn't be able to talk like-
I'm just saying that that information should not be between you and the superintendent. It should be information that you're willing to exchange with the-
Mr. Farley, one such situation that we can't share in public is anything that involves HIPAA.
Correct.
Health insurance. I mean, we can't, we just can't talk about that in an open session.
The only other thing I would emphasize is, though, that I think some of what Mr. Lacatelle is referring to, and as I look around, most, but some members know, which is absolutely fine, anybody who approaches me, I'm gonna have a dialogue with, because the question or the issue might be unique to something you're concerned about. So we're gonna have a dialogue, because I want to make sure you fully understand it and you fully, fully feel comfortable. And not always that we mean we're in full agreement, but so anybody, you know, Mr. Hagmeier comes forward, he's a parent, somebody approaches him on the ball field, and he says, "I need to ask you about this, I heard this." So we're gonna have that dialogue. So I think it's more of not committee business, or deliberations, or decisions, but if you have a concern, or you have a question, I can't emphasize enough, please contact me, because you certainly can. I mean, I don't violate open meeting law by dialoguing with you, we're not gonna make a decision, we're not gonna do committee business. But, you know, you're a community member, you walk around, people approach you, things you read, you might question. Please call me, please talk to me. I get more phone calls and more conversation from certain members than others, because they question and we have that dialogue. The only concern I have, and please, anything, call me, ask me, we'll dialogue about it. If the exit surveys were about me, that's fine, you can have access to those all you want, I tend to be protective of the people who work for me and with me, and they're very rarely solely about me. Vast majority of our staff don't have enough interaction with just me to be doing that. If Mr. Buono leaves, good God, there's gonna be an exit interview, and I'm gonna think it's gonna be primarily about me! But other than that, it's gonna be glowing. Other than that, they tend to be a complexity of things. They tend to be about a lot of things, and sometimes about a lot of people. And I still want that data, and I don't want to have made my administrative team vulnerable, because they've got to be vulnerable to it with me. Being vulnerable to it with a full committee is challenging. I'd like to implement some kind of a survey more about myself and my practices for the teaching staff and for the administrative staff, not just those who are leaving, those who are here, here happily, here moderately happy, here unhappily, and share that with you on a biannual basis. Not to say, you know, "Do you like her?", but more so like what you just saw about my practice, rather than what you can people believe. So I'd be happy to do that transparently and share that with you a couple of times a year. But yeah, that, you know, so Mr. Farley reaches out to me, because he's at Wakona a lot, he saw something, he heard something, he has a question, "Please," and we'll have the same dialogue Mr. Lacatelle and I would, about something that he would ask a question about. It's just a matter of, reach out. Call me, come by.
Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
All right, the superintendent's noted personnel changes, and there's no old business to review in terms of new business. We're meeting on the 24th. If anyone wants to see a topic on that agenda, please let us know. We'll probably be deciding on that agenda next week. And at this point in time, remarks for the committee? Mr. Robert?
Yeah, to your comments about the graduation, it was great. It was the third one I've gone through this year, and it was the shortest one, just in itself was great. But it was a really, a good time. I had the opportunity to, a family member graduated, and I had the opportunity to provide seats for his family. His father had spent a good portion of his life overseas, in the Middle East. So, you know, it was a good thing. I didn't know his grandmother was gonna come. And the point of this story is to tell you, she pulled up in her wheelchair, and the young man at Wakona couldn't get out of their way quick enough to help her. And it wasn't just her, it was what I was focused on, because afterwards I saw him helping other people. And they, you know, they went above and beyond to help everybody, but in this one instance, you know, helping a family member who was in a wheelchair with oxygen tanks, offering to help and get her situated, above and beyond. I sent Mr., the principal, I sent him a, you know, a note the next day thanking him, but, you know, overall, those kids did a great job, you know, helping everyone, but helping my family out, you know, in general. So, thank them.
Dr. Crapres?
I'd like to add to that, too, and as Lori pointed out, I have been around to a few functions lately, but it's a product of my being retired, and I can do that, and it's wonderful, so thank you for inviting me. Graduation was amazing. This was my first year, and I thought it was like a well-oiled machine. Everything went beautifully, it was well-done, and so I too wrote to Erin and thanked him for that. And also the Battle of the Books, that was amazing, and thank you for inviting me, and I'm glad I could participate in that. But Lori was right, just hearing the discussions amongst the children regarding the book, and really having debate, "No, who said that? No, no, no." And they were really having a great exchange, and I value that, that's terrific. So thank you.
Anyone else? I'm gonna add one thing tonight, kind of to what Mr. Farley was discussing before, but I think a couple of family members were approached by this over the past couple of months. But there was a lot of chatter and gossip going on in several of the towns about superintendent getting a 19.33% raise, okay? That was in the FY19 budget. There was a line item in there that had that in there. There was a note down below that said that part of this is grant-funded, okay? So I gave one person all the documentation on that line item, along with excerpts of the superintendent's contract noting that it was a 2% raise. So I'm hoping we're dispelling the rumors around town that, you know, we had a 19% rate, 19.33% raise this year. You know, I don't know if I can explain that any better, but I know the data with Melissa, I understood it very well, and it's amazing.
It's still going around.
Oh, my God!
I hate to tell you, it is still going around.
Well, that was right before the Dalton Commission, right? I had to call them. It was like wildfire.
I know. So if anyone's watching tonight, it was that 19.33%, it's the way the grant funds are paying for a part of the salary.
A lesser part of the salary this year.
A lesser part of the salary. It was a 22% difference in the grant funding, I think, if I recall correctly, so that's why it looked like such a big increase.
It's more than a T-shirt.
Really?
I need to get my Patriot season's tickets, I have to return the T-shirt.
So you'll be ending the meeting and adjourned from executive session, you'll state the reasons.
I'll read the motion, but this is a little bit different. We'll talk about two subjects. One, and it's different from the motion that's in the agenda, we'll talk about reason number four, which is strategies with respect to security, as well as accept some minutes from a previous executive session. It'll have nothing to do with collective bargaining tonight. So be resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee goes into executive session at 8:41 in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A4, Strategies With Respect To Security, and to accept minutes of a previous executive session for which the chair has declared an executive session is necessary to protect the position of the committee and to not reconvene in open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
Give her the motion in a second, to go into executive session when the superintendent calls your name, please indicate. Ironhead.
Dr. Crapres? Yes. Ms. De Tomaso?
Yes.